Okay. If I could have your attention, please, if you're willing and able, if you would stand, and we'll recognize Pastor Gantus at the Mount Olive Baptist Church for the invocation. Reverend? Yes, sir, that'd be fine.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day, for truly it is a day that you have made. We thank you for our country, God, we thank you for our county, we thank you for every county official, and we just pray, God, now that your presence will rest in this place, that you will allow us to conduct your business decently and in order. We thank you again for all that you are and all that you've done for all of us. In Jesus' name, let every heart say, amen.
Amen. If you would, able, place to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the true republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
With the Henry County Board of Commissioners, six thirty PM Tuesday, March fifteenth, twenty sixteen, meet and come to order, welcome. As yet, it's out of the agenda, I would like to ask that the board would consider adding two amendments. One is add a state court presentation by the Honorable Ben Studdard, Chief Judge of the State Court for the creation of a recreation, the probate department, and I'm sure he will go into details as to why we'd be doing this. And I would like to put that, after public safety, at the end of the consent agenda on page two, when I say this is the end of the consent agenda, then I'm gonna put it right there, State Court Judge, I'm gonna recognize him at that time. And then also, I'd like to, the board to consider amending their budget to add on nine B, and it would be a request from senior services. So if you would add that, we will discuss that in the consent agenda as well, and it would be under senior services, under nine, it would be B. So, having said that, unless another board member has any amendments that'd like to discuss at this time, come forward, if not, a here motion to accept, the agenda is amended.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion District Three?
Second.
Second District Two, any further discussion, honor favor raise your hand, all opposed, same sign, so may it. Next, we're gonna recognize our Communication Director, and she's gonna read a proclamation recognizing the Vietnam Veterans Day. Melissa, thank you. Jim, thank you.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight we have a proclamation recognizing March twenty ninth, two thousand sixteen, as Vietnam Veterans Day in Henry County. Whereas on January twelfth, nineteen sixty-two, United States Army pilots lifted more than one thousand South Vietnamese service members over jungle and underbrush to capture a National Liberation Front stronghold near Saigon, while Operation Chopper marked America's first combat mission against the Vietcong, and the beginning of one of our country's longest and most challenging wars. And whereas throughout more than a decade of conflict that tested the fabric of this nation, the service of our men and women in uniform stood true, with service members of different backgrounds, colors, and creeds, who came together to complete a daunting mission. And whereas, the Vietnam War is a story of Americans from every corner of our nation who left the warmth of family to serve the country they loved, answering a call to serve with honor. And whereas, on March twenty ninth, nineteen seventy-three, the last of our troops left Vietnam. However, in one of the war's most profound tragedies, many of these courageous soldiers came home to be shunned or neglected, to face treatment unbefitting to their courage, and a welcome unworthy of their example. And whereas today, we stand as a county, a country and a county to reaffirm our commitment and obligation to show all who have worn the uniform of the United States the respect and dignity they deserve, and we vow to continue honoring their many sacrifices. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners, that March twenty ninth, two thousand sixteen, is known as Vietnam Veterans Day, and they encourage all citizens to observe this day with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities that commemorate the anniversary of the Vietnam War and those who served our country with valor and heroism. On this day, March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, signed by Chairman Tommy Smith. And we have Jim Joyce with Henry County Parks and Recreation.
You're available?
Anybody else here with you? Is anybody with you?
No, I'm here by myself, I think.
And Jim just wanted to have a few words with you.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff, first of all, I'd like to say I'm truly humbled to be standing here in front of you today to accept this proclamation, because it means so much to so many Vietnam veterans, I being one of those. So I can, I can tell you from my standpoint, it means a lot. Two weeks from today, on the twenty-ninth at one o'clock, we're gonna hold a ceremony at the Wall of Honor. That ceremony, ceremony, we're hoping will be the largest ceremony that we've conducted to this day. Our lofty goal is to welcome home six hundred Vietnam veterans. Our realistic goal is about two hundred. We're over a hundred registered for that welcome now. So I would very much like for anybody that's, that's in this room, or that's hearing or watching, to please come and support these fine men and women that serve the country so valiantly. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir, I yield the floor District Four.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanna say, from a veteran to the veterans, we appreciate what you did in Vietnam. Thank you as a county, thank you as a country, and you honor us, and we're honored to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I yield the floor.
Is that it? I yield the floor District Two.
I feel very fortunate, been on the board for a few years, and I know Jim, he's, he's been an incredible asset, and I know that this whole thing that with the veterans has been a passion of yours, and it's very much near and dear to your heart, and echoing a lot like Commissioner Prince, thank you for your service, but also thank you for just the service of giving back to our community as well. Because it just extends the legacy and also just shows, lets the newer generations, younger generations connect with what you've all, you know, this history of ours as well, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I yield the floor District Three.
Jim, I'd like to also thank you for, for what you do for the Henry County and the museum down there. It's top-notch, you go out of your way to really make that thing one of the best it can possibly be, and if you hadn't gone out and seen the museum, take, take a little time and go out there, they've done a lot of good things out there, I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, District One?
Kinda hard for me to add anything, but I know I've got a lot of friends that are Vietnam vets, and I've actually got a friend of mine moving from Florida up here, is moving in on the fifteenth, he's a Vietnam vet, and I know he'll be excited to go to the Wall of Honor to that program, so, thank you for your service, and thank all the veterans for their service.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You are very good friends, and I've enjoyed our, our friendship over the years, and thank you for everything you've done for this county, and we hope you stay around and keep doing more great things for us.
Thank you.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank you as well, and I see you most every day, and you, I know what you do, and you know I know what you do, and we appreciate it.
Can't hide from me.
Thank you. Okay, let's get a picture.
Thanks.
Public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during the portion of this meeting. All persons wishing to speak for a public comment must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comment speaker form, or you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the board for five minutes. What I do is, I take these in order that they fill them out, so first, I would present the Honorable Sandra Vincent. If you would, just come to the podium and state your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, honorable gentlemen. I have a few people here with me, and I'd like for them to join me here at the podium.
You got half to school.
And there's a lot more. So we have some students here from Luella in Hampton High School, and a part of this delegation is also some students from Henry County High School as, as well, but they're not present here on this evening. But it's interesting that we are harrowing Jim on this evening, because I too would like to issue my congratulations for the work that he's done in terms of honoring those heroes of, of the military, and more specifically of, of Henry County. And so, we're here on this evening to talk about a group of heroes that are buried in the Weems Slave Cemetery in Luella, Henry County. And so this is a cemetery that is located south of here, it is the third-largest known cemetery in the state of Georgia, and I have a group of young people here with me this evening who have adopted this project to be not only a project where they restore and clean up that area, but they are looking to create an outdoor classroom. And in addition to being an outdoor classroom, they've got other thoughts about how this can actually be shaped as a model for the entire United States in terms of acknowledging those who lived, who worked, who served as economic development heroes for our county, and who are currently unknown in those sacred grounds. So, I don't want to talk too much, because we've got some kids here who are going to say some things. I want to acknowledge two AP teachers who have joined in this project and are shepherding the teachers, I mean shepherding the students, that's Mr. Roberts, would you please raise your hands, and Ms. Ashley. So this project started in, in two thousand and eleven with Barbara Frazier and Chris Colley. The three of us worked together to invite family members who were descendants of the Weems slaves here for a family reunion, and so, you guys go ahead, because I don't want to steal your thunder. I'm sorry, it's just a lot that I want to say about this project, but you go right ahead, introduce yourself.
Alright, hi, I'm Aaliyah Austin, and I'm currently a junior at Hampton High School, and I'm in Mr. Roberts' AP US History class. Okay, so I was just gonna give you a speech to throw, okay. Good evening, everyone. When I came to history at the beginning of the semester, I was excited to learn that we could, that we would be restoring the Weems Cemetery. The more I learned about our PBL, the more I realized that there was more to be done. When the Councilwoman Vincent came to speak to our class and enlightened us on the possibilities of making the Weems Cemetery a national park, my mind automatically started reeling. There are a hundred and eighty-four people buried in the cemetery behind Luella High School. There's a hundred and eighty-four stories to be told, through plaques, as well as tours giving the students that work on the restoration. Imagine walking down the Clear Nature Trail led by the students, as they relay information to you that themselves have recently just learned, no more than a year ago. To bring to you a wide-open pavilion, where after coming from the tour, you can sit and reflect on what you have just learned about the Weems Cemetery, those buried in it, the real story behind it. Where you go home, whether you are local or out of state, and let others know about the great experience you've just had, so that, so that you may allow others to have the same experience and exchange history. How a simple high school PBL can become a national park that will be used for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Vakay Lee, and I'm in Mr. Roberts' AP US History class, and when I first learned about the PBL, it was very near and dear to me, because it's about my people, my history. And I think it's very, very important to complete, to continuously touch on all of American history, no matter what different races there are, and I believe that these one hundred and eighty-four people are, have to be acknowledged, because they supported the economic growth of Henry County and of almost all of northern Georgia so much. And due to that, I believe that this is very important to us and what we all stand for as a country.
So we are here this evening...
Excuse me, the five minutes is up, you need about one more minute?
Yes, sir. So we're here...
Okay, is anybody object for two more minutes?
We're here tonight to ask for your support. The cemetery is abandoned, and we actually need assistance with right-to-entry for an abandoned cemetery. We have a list of over a hundred people, including agencies, and some of the Weems family members, the descendants who are actually in the room on, on this evening. We have many people who are interested in going out there and starting the process of actually celebrating the lives of those who are buried there, but we are being blocked because we cannot have, we do not have legal entry. And so I would like the support of the Board of Commissioners, I know, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bo Moss has gone out there and looked at the site with me, I've talked to Commissioner Holmes, Commissioner Preston, and Commissioner Prince, and I know Tommy, being a lifelong citizen here, is very much aware of that site, and we're just asking for your support and for your blessings for what we feel will be a tremendous, tremendous move towards memorializing and celebrating those who did so much for the economic base of Henry County.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I yield the floor District Two.
I just wanna, you know, just like we commended Jim for his service, I think, what an incredible opportunity for, you know, the students to, to learn the, just how incredible it is to be generous with your time and to serve, and to give towards things that you're interested in, that you want to learn from. This will be something that I think could have a continued legacy, that you come back years later and get to look at, and I just thank you for serving. I mean, you know, because that's the thing, that excites me, when our younger generation is stepping up and doing these same things that I think that we all get excited about, and it just shows us, hey, this is a good thing for the community, and we got some good students who are gonna make this place, continue to keep this place a great place to live.
Any other comments, questions? District Four?
To honor the dead is to honor yourself.
Yes.
And it saddens me to think of a hundred and eighty-four people who have just been forgotten. So, that being said, County Attorney, would you help these fine people find out who owns that, and get them some right-of-entry, or whatever we need to do to help them get...
Absolutely.
I've done a great deal of research, so I do have the names of the owners, as well as the land is plotted out into graves. The, the challenge that we have is that the owners went bankrupt, and so we've not been able to locate them.
I can, I can help, and I'll get with, I'll get with them next week.
And we hope that you will be involved, hands-on with this project, because I'm, I'm telling you, once you go on those sacred grounds and see the hallowed-out indentations in the earth, all of a sudden, you realize that these were people, these were people who lived, and these were individuals who made significant impact in the economic development of Henry County. So I thank you for your support, and I thank these students for, for taking on this project and just volunteering, and all of the work that they've been doing, they're coming up with charrettes and mind maps and all of these wonderful things, so this is a great community-based project for us all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Y'all want a picture?
Yes!
Okay. Next, we'll recognize Mr. Steve Cash.
Greetings, Mr. Chair and Board of Commissioners. I am Steve Cash, Executive Director for the Henry Council for Quality Growth. I reside at two thousand Flat Rock Road, Stockbridge, in District Five, and proud to be there. Not only here at the county level, but throughout our municipal network, we continue to hear Henry County citizens and some elected officials making derogatory remarks and more, and offending someone or our group in some shape or fashion. Spoken in public forums, on TV, and in social media, these offensive remarks not only attacks character, it attacks the health and well-being of Henry County. To be, in order to be healthy and continue to grow, one must thrive. In this case, the county and cities must thrive to survive. So it is most important to maintain a healthy image for our community to grow and to prosper. The message we seem to be sending out today wreaks of confusion, non-civility, bitterness, and anger. The message from Henry County and some, some, and some cities say simply, we're closed, we are closed to needed commerce, closed to residential buyers, due to our inviting, backbiting, and overall discourse. There's no time left for healthy growth. Please go out and try another county, try another city, we have no time for you. This Commissioners, cities, public, who's on TV, watching either through the web or through the TV channel, is exactly the message we want to send out? Is this what we want to send out? Do we continue to act like children? And I'm not addressing you individually, I'm addressing Henry County, citizenry of Henry County, the citizenry of our municipalities. This prompted the Henry Council for Quality Growth to draft a resolution I would like to share with you. This is a resolution, critical and disapproving of harsh language used publicly to address members of the Henry County Board of Commissioners. We'll address the cities another night. Whereas the Henry Council for Quality Growth Board of Directors has personally witnessed Henry County citizens continue to use condescending and harsh language along with inappropriate name-calling toward our county-sitting Board of Commissioners at public commission meetings. Whereas offenders continue to address Henry County Commissioners as psychotics, sociopaths, nitwits, and other degrading terms in a public setting and on local TV broadcast as well as live social media. Whereas the, we believe that public put-downs such as these serve no purpose except to cause embarrassment to our county government, its elected leaders, and Henry County citizens who voted their Commissioners in office, which in turn deters future commerce and residents from locating in our great county. Whereas the Henry County Council for Quality Growth Board does believe in these offenders' First Amendment rights to speak publicly in government settings and elsewhere, and to say basically what they desire. However, we further believe that such antagonistic disclosures resolve no issues and much more could be accomplished if comments were of a more civil manner. Whereas the Henry Council for Quality Growth Board hopes that said offenders recognize the unfortunate and damaged consequences of their verbal assaults causing far more harm than perhaps realized to our community as a whole. Whereas we do not always agree with Commission Board actions, however, we greatly appreciate each Board Member's dedication, civility, and sacrifice to our county and the citizens they serve. Therefore, be it resolved that the Henry Council for Quality Growth Board of Directors hereby request to those who wish to offend personally our elected public servants to cease and desist immediately. While we do not belittle their reasons for disdain and disappointment, we do ask that those offenders remain civil and courteous when publicly addressing our Commissioners. Approve this fifteenth day of March, two thousand sixteen...
Time may accept, anybody object in one minute? Okay, you extended one minute.
Approve this fifteenth day of March, two thousand sixteen, Jack Bowden, Board Chairman and its Board of Directors, Butch Oliver, Clay Wall, Debbie Britt, Gina Curran, Jan Townley, Lou Martin, Mike Daniel, Pat Stewart, Ray Cheek, and Shirley Tyree. We must always be aware that in order to strive toward and obtain the quality of life we all desire, we must have economic growth and superior public schools. In order to accomplish this, we must have civil and unified actions amongst our citizens and our government. So I do appreciate you. I know where you're at, I've been there, I know how you sacrifice, I know for a fact how much time you have to put in your job and efforts, how much time you have to be away from your, your family, your friends, in order to function as a civilized government. The Henry Council for Quality Growth thanks you so much for what you do, and we're always here to be encourager and supportive of your works each and every day. Thank you so much.
Next, I'd like to recognize Clara Phillips, just come up to the podium, state your name, please.
My name is Clara Phillips, and I live off, off one forty-four...
My name is Clara Phillips, and I live off 144 Eagle Lake subdivision. I'm here about the speed bumps that we need to install. It's a lot of traffic come through there since they put the red light there by Fuller Drive, so I stay across over Eagle Lake subdivision, and a lot of traffic come through there, they speed. It's just a lot of traffic, and we need something to be done about it, because I stay red on the main street, and when they come down, they just speed, and I think someone gonna get hit, or someone gonna get killed coming through there. So I address that, and we need to do something about it.
Let me tell you what you can do. I think somebody came out here today and made an inquiry.
Right.
And I think it was Mr. Davis, and I think he lives on that street. Anyway, if you go through the neighborhood and get, if you go to the Department of Transportation, they can give you a form and a petition, and you can go through the neighborhood, and if you get a certain amount of people that agree to that, sign that petition, then Henry County will go out and put speed brakes up.
Okay, we have did that, but we needed so many for that, and we've been trying to get this one for the last 20 years, and nothing had been done about it.
You saying the neighborhood won't go along with that?
Sir?
Are you saying that you can't get enough people in the neighborhood to agree to that?
Well, some did, and some don't, but we have did it years ago before the new president come above, the thing. But anyway, they never did do nothing about it, and it's been like that for the last 20 years, and I've been there 20 years on that main street.
Well, the only way we could put speed humps out there, speed brakes, whatever you call them, is go through the formal application, and that way, when we do put them in there, the people that don't like them don't complain, because it's a neighborhood deal.
Right.
And we just found out many, many, many years ago, that we don't want to put something in your neighborhood that the vast majority of people don't want.
Yeah.
So if two or three people want them, we put them in there, and, but, we come up with a, I think, a fair and equitable solution, to where when you get a certain amount of people in the neighborhood, to sign a petition to Henry County, that their experience will come out and install speed humps at the appropriate places.
Yeah, like I said, I stay on the main street, but majority on the main street want them, and then some that don't stay there, they do want them in there either way it go. Like I said, it's a speed thing there. And then the neighbors got a basketball goal, the children play ball, and the ball goes in the street, and you got cars coming down through there flying, you know, so...
Yes, ma'am. Well, I'm gonna let the county manager put that on his to look into list, and he will look and see if it's anything we can do, a sign, or children that play, or something, and we can, he can alert the police department for a period of time as to patrol the area more often.
Yeah, 'cause it's a lot of cut-throughs when they put that red light there.
Yes, ma'am. I'm very familiar with the cut-through. I use it too.
Okay, then, okay, well, we need to do something with about it, then, you know?
Yes, ma'am. But I do not speed when I go through there.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna check out now, I'll stay on that first street now.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna see your car come through there.
Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome.
We have a question here.
Mr. Wade, could you tell me the percentage of signatures they would have to have? Do you know? I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
It's okay, it's 51 percent, so...
Fifty-one?
Fifty-one. So if you would just call our office, Ms. Clara, I'll put you in touch with Mr. Kenny Morris, and we'll get you the paperwork you need to get the process going.
Okay. Right on. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Wade.
You're welcome.
Next, we recognize Dr. Ashby. Maybe I'm not correct, maybe I'm... She's not here, okay? I call for again Dr. Ashby, I understand she's not here, so I'm gonna put this over here. Now, Ms. Minnis?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. I represent Eagles Lake, the homeowner that just spoke. I'm the HOA President of this subdivision. I've been here several times to address the speeding and a lot of other things. Commissioner Bo is our Commissioner. I've sent you emails, and I talked with someone in the office today, so I did send an email. It's getting to be very frustrating, very annoying, because it seems like where we are in Eagles Lake, which is located between Bridges and 2081, we're at Atlanta Motor Speedway, and that's serious. I brought some pictures to show you the entrance, I don't know whether to... Okay. That's the entrance from 2081, the traffic light, into our subdivision. This is where the speeding starts, and right in that curve is where the speeders start. That's the beginning. This is into our neighborhood, as you come around the curve, the street that Ms. Clara spoke of, once you get in that curve and turn right, that's Lake Terrace. The street right in the front is Autumn Lake, that's the street I live on. And that's the street going up, Lake Terrace, once people turn, they go down that street warehouse here. They are speeding so fast. I was walking one day, and the person came around the curb and almost hit me, and I'm on the sidewalk. We have had incidents where one motorist vehicle went through the garage, it jumped and went through the resident's garage, all the way through, and thankfully, that they were not in their garage. And we've had our entry fence broken down because of speeding, and yes, we have cut-throughs. Henry County official vehicles comes through all the time, I'm at the office and they do. We have had our neighbors and myself to go through and get signatures. We do need 94 signatures, there are 185 homes in our subdivision. Right now, we're halfway there. Whatever you can do, I know that we won't get the 94, because a lot of the homes in there are owned by non-residential owners. People are moving in and out of our community. Safety is priority for us, and we need your help, Commissioner Bo. I know this is an election year, so it would be good if you could help us out. We have 185 homes, and about two or three adults living there, so that's pretty much over 400 votes. So whatever you can do, yes, I have gone to the Henry County Department of Transportation, we have printed out the forms, we have walked to every house, we have sent mail-outs, we have done our job, but we will not get the 94 signatures. So whatever, we're trying to do it because the children are getting off and getting on the buses, it's not safe, and I hope that nobody gets hit. I hope that we won't have any more tragedies as our resident did in 2014, of their home being damaged, and that was a lot of cost related to them. Thank you, and I hope that you can help us to get this done in our neighborhood.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir, District 4.
We do have police here. Major Goins, can you put this subdivision on 1094 list, please? Thank you.
Next, we have a request from the Honorable Judge Kelly Powell to address the Board on County-related Issues, the Judge of the Probate Court. Judge Powell.
I'll speak loudly. Thank you for allowing me to be here, and this is for informational purposes only. I'm not asking for anything tonight, so this is to get ready for, to ask you for things. So, just want to let you know where we are. I've been on a letter-writing campaign for many, many years, and I know we've had county managers and commissioners, you know, to cycle through, but I just want to make sure that I'm letting everybody know what we need this upcoming budget cycle. So, let me give you just a little bit of information. And the PowerPoint's up here, I'm sorry, I guess I should be later on the agenda when it's darker, but can you, can some of these lights go off? It's not gonna help, I know we need a new projector, from what I hear, but when Probate Court first moved into the building that we're in now, and most of you know that as the old Alexander Library, we're on Sim Street, and so when they first moved in, we had a population in the county of 139,800. And so now, in 2016, our population is estimated at 223,916, so that's a 60 percent increase in our population. Our square footage of our building, when Judge Budgerel moved in in 2002, was 7,046 square feet. Now it's 7,586 square feet. We were able to capture, we had a bit of a patio area that already had a floor, and it already had a cover, it had a roof on it, so we captured that area to make our waiting room just a little larger, and we added employee restrooms, because when I started, we had 11 people, 11 women in there, and one toilet. So, we are thankful that the county was able to add more toilets. So we've only had an 8 percent increase in our square footage. Public restrooms, and I debated about how to word this. We have a tremendous number of people coming in and out of our building every day. We have one men's toilet, and we have one women's toilet. I don't mean stalls, I mean you go in and you close the door and lock it, so, and that's one reason that I'm not having court there, is because there's not appropriate facilities for the number of people that we see. So we've had no increase. Our biggest problem by far is our parking. We have 18 public parking spaces, and two of those are handicapped, and so we were able to add some parking spaces in 2008, I believe, but those have been taken up by our increase in employees, because we're serving more people, so really, our net gain has only been two parking places. And I come to you today to let you know that we really are desperately in need of a solution. Our citizens, who are our customers, come to us every day, and they have to ride around and around the building, because where we are, we're in a residential neighborhood, we don't have adjacent parking for other businesses or courts that we can use, and there's no street parking there. So I just want to show you just a few pictures, so we've only had an 11 percent increase in parking. These are some of the pictures, and it's a little dark to see, but if you go by our building, people are parking on the grass, people are parking at the very back, we have a little picnic table right there, people are parking against that. People are parking where there's no parking, there's no parking in that spot, because it doesn't have an appropriate turn radius for, you know, trucks with dooleys, or the UPS man, or anybody else, but people are having to park there. Also, you notice, if you look at the first picture on the left, there is parallel parking across the back, and we reserve that for employees, because it's, we just don't want customers to try to have to parallel park. But you'll notice, Ms. Terry eats her lunch outside every day, that's what she likes to do, and there's a customer just parked right in front of her. People are making parking places, and it's not their fault, we just are out of space and room. So, another issue is, we, I have not had court in my building since 2013, and you may not be aware of that, but we have been borrowing court space. I had to stop having court in my building because I needed the extra space, but also because we don't have adequate parking now. If I added litigants and court cases, there is definitely no room for parking. When we would have court hearings, I felt like I would have to take, when we took a break, for everybody to go to the restroom with a whole room full of people, I felt almost like I needed to give out the little numbers that you would take at the Piggly Wiggly deli, that says, "Now you're gonna go to the restroom number one, court reporter, you go next," and so a regular break would take us 30 minutes, so. And let me just compare this to you, and I'm glad Judge Studdard's here, and Judge Blunt was here just a minute ago. In Superior Court, we have three judges, and they have four courtrooms. State Court has four judges and five courtrooms. Magistrate Court has three judges and three courtrooms, including the courtroom at the jail. Juvenile Court has two judges and two courtrooms. Probate Court has two judges and no courtroom since 2013. And I will tell you, I know that the judges are tired of seeing my phone ring at their desk for me to beg a courtroom to have court. I have certain days that I'm scheduled, but I have emergency hearings. I have court, and I can't find a place to have court. So that's one of our huge concerns. Okay, now, if anything else hasn't really scared you, I think this will, and let you know that we really need a long-term solution. I'm in need of a current solution, but it's not gonna get better, it's gonna get worse. So these are our population projections, according to the Atlanta Regional Commission. So for 2020, our projected population is 282,000. For 2030, 358,000. 2040, 432,000 people. I don't have the room to serve our current citizenry, much less the growth that's coming to our area. Just want to let you know just briefly, some of the things that we've done that has caused us to have to utilize our space inside the building, we now have a deputy on site, we now have security on site, which we didn't have when I first started. We do all of our live scan printing for weapons carry permits on-site, so our customers don't have to leave and go to the Sheriff's Department. We did over 5,800 weapons carry permits last year alone. Each year, we keep reaching a new high, as far as those numbers. We have a GCI terminal, and we run histories on anybody who wants to be a guardian of an elderly person or a minor, so that takes up room as well. Also, we have expanded facilities for passports. We have been doing online reservations, but now we're to the point where, because of the traffic issue, we're trying to spread people out even more, so, and I want everybody who's watching this at home to know, you can walk in any day to Probate Court to, you can either sign up for an appointment, and then we will see you at that appointment time, but you can walk in any day up until 2 o'clock to get a passport, and we're hoping maybe that will regulate out. We were having only one day a week for walk-ins, so we're hoping that might help ease our traffic problem. The only other thing I'd like to leave you with is, besides parking, I know, and this is Skip Floyd's budget that I'm gonna be asking you to please give him deference to, we have gone in the last several years to web-based software programming, we do vital records, all of the records we get, we get through the web and the cloud. All of our software is web-based. Everything we do is web-based, it's not on our server. But what's happening is, especially in the afternoons, the county is so congested with internet use, that sometimes we can't even access our software. We can't access the records that people need to get certified copies of. We're pretty much shut down sometimes. If we're not shut down, we're tremendously slow, and that's just a huge disservice, besides the fact that it scares me that it's all just going to go away one day. I think at this point, I would probably like to go back to server-based software. I want to know I can get my records at any time, and not have to depend on our ability to access our things in the cloud, but I think that's not a reality. I think we're just gonna have to hopefully find the money and the resources so that we can continue to do our job. So, just want to give you that heads-up as to what our needs are, and I'll be glad to take any questions you might have. And please come by our court.
Yes, sir, District 2.
I have renewed license probably in the last three months, and the online reservation system is where it's at, so I would encourage, you know, our citizens, definitely go on the website, it's very easy to sign up for the site, and then the staff, I mean, your employees, I mean, they're awesome, I mean, they were really good...
Thank you.
...on the service, so, I mean, I think the online reservation, it is crowded over there, I mean, no doubt about that.
We've got people sitting on the floor in the lobby, and that's... But, and I will tell you that Skip Floyd designed our online reservation system for us, for passports and for gun permits, there, I think you can even do a few other marriage licenses, you can make reservations, because I know some people don't get paid when they're out of work, they need to know that when, if they get an appointment, and they're gonna be seen then. So if you're a walk-in, you're gonna be behind somebody with appointments, but thank you, thank you for that compliment, I'm gonna... I'm going to pass it on to my staff.
Anybody else have any comments? The only comments I will make is, and I want the audience to know, that's my daughter. But having said that, she has two things working against her. One is she's the only female judge in Henry County. And she doesn't know I'm saying all this. It wasn't preformed, but if she had, had she been a male, she'd have got anything. All the other judges get everything they want, that's a fact. Now, second thing is she was working closely with District Three Commissioner Barnes in thirteen. Okay? And they was well on their way to making some adjustments. And Kelly knows it, Judge Powell knows this. Okay? We've got a, a new county manager in fourteen. And because he disliked me, and this is a fact too, he put facilities maintenance on notice. Don't do anything for Judge Powell anymore because that's the chairman's daughter. And it's really sad that you have to come up here in front of dad and these people up here and, and beg for something. So I'm, I'm just speaking freely and we don't do good treating women up here. We have a track record of treating women ugly. And more especially, women of, of the minority race. So I just said that and anybody wants to make a rebuttal to that, feel free.
I have every confidence that the child are going to do the right thing and find the money. I think that's the hard part, is finding money to do this. I'll leave you with one last thing. I know that Elections is looking for a place to be too. I think my court and Elections is very compatible. Elections doesn't need a large space, but several times a year. And I can work around that. So there may be some common uses. We may can use some common areas. So, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll do it. Anybody else have any comments? Right now be the time to make them. Okay. I'm going to take and make an executive decision here. I understand that Dr. Ashby is present. If you are, raise your hand. Okay. I'm going to make an executive decision. I'm going to allow you to come up and speak for five minutes. This is a lady I called protocol a while ago and you weren't here. So if you'll come up to the podium, state your name, we'll hear you for five minutes.
Thank you. Commissioners, appreciate it. My name is Kai Ashby. And I'm here today because I'm representing my subdivision, which is in District One. It's called Eagles Lake. We are trying to get some speed humps in our subdivision. I've lived there since the inception of the community, which has been about twenty-one years. And it's an issue that we have been fighting for a very long time. Our subdivision consists of a hundred and eighty-five homes. We've recently had some serious injuries in our community with a car that has sped out of control on the main street into our subdivision. And it ran into a home and destroyed the home. We have a lot of young children in our community and we care about them. We care about every member in our subdivision. So we're asking the commissioners, commissioners here, if you could approve some speed humps into our subdivision. I know we had two members that were here earlier, a few members here earlier representing our community. And we would just like to know if we can get some participation. Now, I would like to just address you just for a few minutes, Commissioner Bo Moss. You are our commissioner. I live in the Blacksville community. And as I stated earlier, for over twenty years. Now, I really have not seen you do too much in our community for the African-American people who live there. So what I would like to address to you directly, I know this is a, a new year for voting for commissioners. And we're going to say no to Bo unless you do something about these speed humps. I see your signs all over the black community, but you haven't done anything for the black people as far as I can see, the twenty-some years I've lived there. So we're asking you if you could just take the opportunity to come in our community because we get a lot of the Henry County Water Department trucks come through our community. And that shouldn't even happen. They have to go around like everyone else. They're the ones that's speeding through our community. So you guys need to come and sit there for maybe like twenty, twenty-five minutes. And you'll see what, what's happening, what we're talking about. So if we can get your cooperation to help us to get these speed bumps so that we can salvage what's left of our fledgling community, we would very much appreciate it. Thank you for this opportunity and have a good evening.
How many signatures do you have on your petition? You need, it looks like here ninety-four?
Well, actually, we had over one hundred signatures three times, I believe it was. But the problem was, I think the, the third time, they stated that it have to be notarized. The signatures have to be notarized. This was after our third attempt, which meant maybe in a, in a period of over ten years. So now we have ninety-four signatures. Let me explain something very quickly here. Our community consists of seventy-five percent investors. So we lost control of our community. The investors just kind of much took over. And so we having a hard time getting those signatures because of that. But we want to save our community. We want to save our families. We want everyone to remain safe. And we want to keep peace and harmony in our communities. So, you know, we, we also would like to, I want to address the, the issue too with a light, the light that you guys put right there on Bridges, on Phillips Drive in our community right there. I mean, it's, it's done, there's nothing we can do about that. But if we can get maybe like a sign right there in the front. I know you guys had taken that sign down. People come by, they drive right past it, don't know, a lot of people don't know that we're there. Family members who are, or friends who wanted to come visit, that's another issue we have. But right now, I really would like to address the speed humps. So if you can kind of override, if there's anything you can do to override it, help us get these speed humps, we would appreciate it. Again, like I said, we're for you if you're for us. But we're going to say no to Bo right now. Okay?
I'll talk to some people.
All right. Any other questions from anyone else? All right, thank you. Gentlemen, have a nice evening.
Thank you. Next we'll have a request addressed to Board of Commissioners, fifteen minutes, Mr. Bill Tony. State your name for the record, please.
Bill Tony. Since the last meeting, I had a little problem. Less than a week after the meeting, I put up all these names of people that was responsible for, for the money wasted, fifty, fifty-four million dollars. Less than a week after I spoke up here and put all this out here, I have two guys show up at my door with my wife there by herself, had a badge and a piece of paper. Well, scared her to death. Now, I'm not accusing anybody of anything. But less than a week after I get up here and speak, I've got these two guys coming to my door. All right? I want to show you.
It's a badge, I know, what kind of? A fake badge.
This is the kind of thing. Now, I want you to look at this, how real this looks. Anybody, I've been, I watched the video, of course, I went in five. I shred it. That was probably one of the most unprofessional things I've ever seen.
Two guys show up at your door, got a badge. Now, I made this. It looks like it's on county.
It looked real when I handed it to you, didn't it?
Of course, it says, Henry County Tax Assessor's Office, map code one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Appraiser John Q. Robber. Dear property owner, I am respectfully, I am, I am here respectfully to rob your house. I will come with a fake badge I bought at a costume store. Tell you, I am here from the county for a random inspection. Explain my process to you, which will make you feel comfortable with me. And then you will invite me in to do my job and I will rob you. Thanks for trusting your county. Thanks in, in advance for your cooperation. Now, this is a fake and I, you know, I did it just to, to show you how my, how my wife felt when somebody showed up at the door with, two guys show up at the door with a badge and a piece of paper saying they're here to measure my house, to measure my property. Well, I had no notification of them coming. I don't know if, if what I said here, somebody didn't make a phone call and say, hey, you need to go look at Bill Tony's house. Now, my house, I called, I called the tax assessor's office and I told him I didn't appreciate, two guys showed up at my door, just call us, send us something. He said, we can't afford to send you postcards. I thought that was the dumbest thing I've ever heard. You make an appointment. Well, he also, I told him, I said, my wife, these two guys scared her to death. It was two young guys, a badge and, and these, and this I made a copy of. But the thing about it is, you got old people, senior citizens, that they'll just open the door and you got something like this. You need to send out something ahead of time. This is, this is crazy. My wife called me and I started home. They left before I got home. So I called Charlie down at the tax assessor's office. And I told him, I said, I didn't appreciate it. At some, two guys show up at my door with badges. He said, well, the law's on our side. That was right out of his mouth, the law's on our side, we can come anytime we want. I didn't appreciate that. I said, my car got stripped in my driveway. My house has been broke into, my truck's been broke into twice. He said, sounds like you live in DeKalb County. I didn't appreciate that. I know it was supposed to be in humor, but I didn't appreciate it. I was still upset for my wife calling me almost in tears, having two guys show up at our door. Now, you send two guys out with tape measures to measure something, take the salary, send one guy. I mean, a lot of construction guys work by theirself. So it doesn't take two guys to measure anything, I wouldn't think. I could get around it, I'm in the business, I could probably figure out a way to do it. But take that salary and, and send people postcards and give them a notice that you are coming. He also said if they do a neighborhood, they'll come out and give the people warning that they're coming. Or, you know. But anyway, like I said, I'm not, I'm not, I'm calling anybody doing anything wrong. But I, I'm telling you, this wasn't wrong.
How long ago did they have something like this? Did it not look for a year?
You can't shred that.
I come up here and I, I listen to Steve. And I'm not up here calling anybody names, I'm not doing anything. I'm trying to make our county better. I'm trying to stop all the wasteful spending to where we can have a good county and not, and not high taxes and everything else. I go out of my way to do research. I don't, I'm not like other folks that come up here and read a script. I do my homework. Everything in here that I talk about, I've got minutes of meetings, I've done research, made copies. I've got resolutions, I've got everything right here. If any one of you ever has anything to ask me a question about, I've got proof right here. I'm not, I'm not some nitwit like other folks call to come up here. Now, what I wanted to do was to talk to you about cotton fields. Again, this, this isn't right, isn't right by any means. Now, I don't know what kind of preferential treatment or anything else comes with knowing anybody in this county. I know I've hit a lot of road, roadblocks and bumps along the way. But I will say this. You start trying to break up little cliques in the groups, those people right there are responsible for all these wasted, wasted buildings, farms, golf courses and everything else. That's the people that you need to look at. And, yeah, and I wanted to, I wanted to ask for a, a motion that we, that we would make a motion for the county attorney to, to get started on trying to, to get out of this agreement with, with the Swinakers. This right here, is part of their agreement. Now, from what I understand, all the monies from the golf course goes to the bank. The monies that they collect for people using our golf course went in their bank. Now, to me, that right there, that's not right. Now we're having to straighten up. Did, did we get anywhere with that? Have they wrote us a check or anything for the, for being tied up with their golf courses?
Reconciliation.
And for the promotional parts? We've got it credited now, yes, sir.
Okay, what did we get out of that?
I think it's like thirty, I think it's thirty-four? Thirty-four thousand?
All right, thirty-four thousand dollars? Very good. It's bad that you have to find out about it the wrong way. This right here tells the whole story. Money pit, that's exactly what it is. It's nothing but a money pit. We need to get rid of it. Forget we ever had the thing busted up. That right there's got to be, if, if, Bo, let me tell you something. If this is your last year here, at least do something. Vote to close this thing, try to get this thing done. Brian, I know you're not going to be there. You other guys, just look at this thing. I get up here and it seemed like it falls on deaf ears, that nothing ever happens. Nobody ever says anything. It just keeps going. This thing's bleeding the county. We're losing money all the time on it. We're losing money every day that thing's open. Please wake up. These people, they don't care, they're making their money. They're, they're making seventeen thousand dollars a month just to keep it open and we're losing, probably close to that. It's not right. I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you very much.
Anybody have any comments or questions? I only have one, I won't be here next year either. This is my last year. Next we'll have consent agendas, the following agenda items shall be considered on a consent agenda. Before voting on the consent agenda items, the chairman will provide opportunity to add and delete. The addition of the one has already been added by amendment to the, to the agenda. So I will read the following, unless somebody wants to add or delete for discussion, any of them. The first one, DUI drug course reservation request and application for grant for the state of Georgia of the Governor Criminal Justice
of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council 2017 for the DUI drug task program. Juvenile court, resolution request and application for grant from the state of Georgia of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for the fiscal year 2017 for the Henry County Juvenile Mental Health Accountability Court, Adult Felony, Felony Court. Resolution requesting to apply for a grant from the state of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2017 for the Adult Felony Drug Court Program. Resource court, resolution request to apply for a grant from the state of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2017 for the resource court program. Senior Services Resolution authorizing Senior Services to accept amendment one of the Community Service Block Grant Contract for fiscal year 2016. Second one is to, uh, a resolution by the Henry County Board of Commissioners for authorization to apply for the Community Service Block Grant Contract for fiscal year 2017 from Senior Services. Unless somebody has any amendments or anything, does somebody move, we, uh, move to accept the consent agenda as read. Have motion District Three, second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we're going to recognize the, uh, Honorable Chief Judge from State Court, uh, Chief Judge Ben Studdard. And we have a package on that that was handed out earlier. Yohanna.
Chairman, members of the commission, I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. Uh, and I come to talk to you about the provision of misdemeanor probation services in the county. Since 2001, uh, the county and the courts have contracted with a private probation provider to supervise our misdemeanor probationers. Felony supervision is provided by the State Department of Corrections. But, uh, some twenty, twenty-five years ago, the state decided that it had too much to do to supervise misdemeanors and left that to the counties and cities to do that either through, uh, public probation offices or providing for, uh, contracts with, uh, private providers. And so, we've contracted with Sentinel since, I believe, 2001. Uh, you may have seen, uh, headlines in the newspapers and in other media about the turmoil that the private probation industry finds itself in. And Georgia is ground zero for that turmoil. The private probation industry has found itself the subject of one lawsuit after another. Uh, many of them directed at Sentinel, the company that has provided us with probation services. We have, in light of the many problems that have been addressed in the, in the state and national media and even internationally about Sentinel and other private probation companies, have been examining their performance in supervising our misdemeanor probationers. Uh, and quite simply, we have found them to be wanting. Uh, I have felt for quite a while that they have been the weak link in the services that we provide at State Court. Uh, and we have been looking about for other alternatives. Uh, we've determined that there is no other satisfactory alternative in the private probation industry. However, uh, much to my amazement with the number of, uh, state courts that have gone to kind of operating their own probation departments. Remarkably, every single judge that I've talked to in those courts expresses how happy they are to have them and how much better the performance is. So, we are asking the county, uh, well, first of all, we are, are letting you know that we have given notice to Sentinel to terminate their contract with us effective July 1 of this year. And we're asking you to endorse the creation of a probation department to be funded by, uh, probation fees just as our county probation, our private probation company is now. Uh, the, many of our colleagues in counties similar to Henry, including Clayton County, Hall County where Gainesville is, Athens, Clark County, uh, and others, Macon, Bibb County, uh, have expressed to us, uh, not only that the service is better, uh, but also that they are able to operate, uh, their county probation office at little or no cost to the county because the cost is borne by the probationers themselves through the probation fees that they pay. Uh, we believe the same thing will happen here. To get, to open a department on July 1, we need to immediately, uh, begin the process of hiring a director. And so, we have asked, uh, county staff to help us come up with an interim budget from now to the end of this fiscal year. Uh, and in the budget request that we'll have for fiscal year 17, uh, we will have a full-blown, uh, budget for the complete operation. We've been talking to the folks from Sentinel. We believe that we can adopt, you know, some of their best employees. We've been looking at the models from these other counties that have already gone through this to adopt the best of their policies and procedures so that we're not starting from ground zero. Uh, so, we are asking you tonight to approve a resolution, authorizing the creation of a Henry County Probation Services Department and establishing a budget to go from now through the end of this fiscal year.
Anybody have any questions, comments? County manager, you need to add something to this?
Oh, I would love to, I'd like to thank the judge for coming and including me in the budget discussions when we were first talking about the Sentinel project. The, the thing that I emphasized and the judge absolutely agreed to, that this has to be self-sustaining. Uh, we are not aware of any space needs or any changes remodeling. Like, we got caught with the, some of the court work this year and the judges all agree that it will make this pay for itself.
We have the ability, uh, within reason, to set probation fees, uh, to adjust those to meet the, the expense of the, of the department. And that's something we'll obviously be looking at.
Your probation officers will be going into the area where Sentinel was, is that correct?
Uh, we've discussed that with Sentinel, we've also discussed that with their landlord. We believe we'll be able to make that work out.
Okay, and just to reiterate for the constituents, this is self-funding and is not going to affect their tax base or anything of that nature, is that correct?
That's right.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else comment? Not, we have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners creating a new department entitled Henry County Probation Services and authorizing a budget amendment to fund a newly created department if somebody would come. Have motion District Five, second District Two, any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Public hearing. To receive public comments on the proposed amendments to the F correction, uh, chart, CDBG FY 14 and 15 Annual Action Plan and request the board to consider approval of the proposed amendments. Ms. Sagnot, greetings.
Good evening, commissioners, chairman and board of the commission. The Henry County Community Development Department seeks to amend activities identified in its fiscal year 2014 and 2015 annual action plans. As required in the Citizens Participation Plan, staff has published a public notice of the proposed amendments in the February 10, 2016 edition of the Henry Herald. The public notice was displayed at numerous public facilities located throughout the county and on the county's website as listed in the Citizens Participation Plan. A public comment period of thirty days was held concurrently to allow for public review and comments from Wednesday, February 10 through Monday, March 14, 2016. The proposed amendments delete or reprogram for activities that will not be carried out as previously prescribed in the respected annual action plans. As of February 29, 2016, comments had not been received from the general public. However, comments had been received from other county departments, namely, facilities maintenance, risk management and Henry County DOT departments. Staff has been working with these departments to understand the concerns that they've had and work through those. Um, as a result, we have held meetings and have worked through any concerns and answered all the questions. In addition, based on those conversations, we are withdrawing a proposal for Flint Circuit Council on family violence for the, for Haven House, for fire equipment commercial, fire suppression system of five thousand dollars. This proposal will be resubmitted after additional information is sought and received. All other proposals for deletions or additions remain as requested.
Anybody have any questions or comments, the board?
This is public hearing, correct?
I'll have it after you have any comments, yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, I'll have some after.
Okay, anybody have any comments? Okay, if not, I'm going to open the floor up for ten minutes. Anybody from the public that'd like to come to the podium, state your name for public comments. I state again, the floor is open for ten minutes. Anybody that'd like to publicly make comments on this proposed amendment to the CDBG FY 14 and 15? Seeing none, hearing none, I'm going to declare the public hearing has been met and I yield the floor to District Four.
Shane and I have a question.
Yes, sir.
It's, um, no secret, I've spent quite a bit of time in a police car now with Henry County. And in doing so, I've, I've actually spent a bit of time with the Southern Crescent Sexual Assault Center down in Hampton. Are we providing any funding for them or are they on our radar? I, I know we had a little something going on with them last year, but I, I didn't know what we were doing. I looked at some of their statistics here recently and they're, they're growing by leaps and bounds. It's sad, but it is a necessary part of our community that, that we really need to fund. What do we have going on?
They are recipients in 2015, which is our current funding year. They also received funding in 2014. Um, when we present our 2016 annual action plan, you will see that they did submit an application for our upcoming funding year as well. The activities that we have here are primarily public facility funds. They are a recipient of our public service activities.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Everybody else having a comment? If not, we have a resolution to receive public comments on the proposed amendments, which has been adhered to. Uh, does somebody move that we consider approving the proposed amendments?
Move to approve.
Have motion District Four. Second from District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing, RZ 1523, Cecilia Lawrence of McDonough, Georgia, requests a rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural Course, C2, General Commercial for the property located at 62 South Bethany Road in Land Lot 171, the seventh district. The property consists of 2.58 plus or minus acres and requests us for a landscaping business, District One. Dante, greetings.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to rezone 2.58 acres from residential agricultural, which is zoned RA to C2, General Commercial, for the purpose of a full-service landscaping company. The proposed use falls under the lawn and garden category in the ULDC land use table, which requires a commercial zoning of C2 or greater. In addition, there is a forty-foot buffer requirement between commercial and residential zone districts. And the existing building is thirty-four feet, two inches from the southern property line that abuts an RA zone, single-family residence. The applicant will need to apply for an administrative waiver to reduce the forty-foot buffer requirement to twenty feet with a decorative fence per ULDC Section 110300D, as in David. An administrative waiver would also be required for the applicant's proposed eight thousand six hundred square foot gravel parking lot and that's per ULDC Section 110300E. The subject properties are within the limited, and this is as information, the, the properties are within the limited development area of the Tussle Hall Watershed Protection District and will need to adhere to the ULDC Section 30400 Watershed Protection District requirements. Regarding the future land use map, and I'm going to change the overhead. The future land use map designates the subject property as low-density residential, thereby making the rezoning request inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. However, the subject properties are located within the Georgia 801 at Old Jackson Road Crossroads Activity Center, which calls for thirty percent non-residential uses and approximately fifty-two acres remain to be designated non-residential to meet the targeted thirty percent non-residential land uses within this activity center. So, with that said, planning and zoning staff took a recommendation to the zoning advisory board of approval with eight conditions on January 21st. And the zoning advisory board recommends to the board of commissioners approval with the eight conditions that staff recommended. And I'll place those on the overhead as well.
Anybody have any comment? Question for staff. Okay, I yield the floor District One. Dante, uh, do the, the applicant understand the conditions and agree to the conditions?
To my last correspondence with the applicant, they are here, they are agreeable to the conditions.
Okay. I'll, I'll be waiting to ask that at the end.
Sure.
Normally, I do. Right, I'll ask that. When, when, uh, if, if the board moves in, in that direction, then I will, uh, ask that question at that time. Okay. You got any more questions? No, I've got a statement to make. I've been out and talked with the citizens around the area that live in there and I didn't find anybody that objected to this zoning, so, with that being said. Anybody else got any questions, comments? If not, this is a public hearing, I'd like for the, ask the applicant to come forward, state their name. Present your case and you have ten minutes. State your name for the record, please. State your name for the.
My name's Donnie Lawrence.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm just here to try to, uh, ask for rezoning of this piece of property and.
Okay, that's, that's, that's all you have to say, if that's all you want to say. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, I'm going to open this up for public hearing. If anybody is in favor of this, I will yield nine minutes and forty-five seconds if you're in favor of it. So, if anybody wants to get up and speak in favor, now'd be the time to do it. If not, I'm going to open the floor up for ten minutes for opposition. And if you oppose it, please come to the stadium, uh, podium, state your name for the record and it will be total ten minutes for the whole entirety. So, if you have any opposition to this, uh, please come forward. I say again, if you have opposition of this zoning request, please come forward. Seeing none, hearing none, I declare the public hearing has been terminated and I would ask the applicant to, uh, come back to the podium, please. Before the board takes a vote on this, uh, as published, the Zone Advisory Board, uh, requested approval of this request with the following conditions, which are all eight. Do you, uh, agree, do you concur that you will adhere to these eight? If not, now's the time to negotiate something. So, do you agree to these eight items?
Yes, sir.
Okay, having said that, uh, thank you. We have a, uh, resolution, approval of rezoning requests by Lawrence from a property located at 62 South Bethany Road in Land Lot 171, the seventh district, consisting of 2.58 acres. If anybody wants to move in that direction, it has a motion. Move to approve. Have a motion from District One. Second District, uh, three, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you so much. Public hearing, MC 15-07 Central Community LLC, Atlanta, requesting modification of zoning condition. The Colledown of Hampton, uh, subdivision on the south side of Highway 81 west of Georgia 3 and east of North Steel Drive in Land Lot 186 of the sixth district, the property consists of thirty-six point three-two plus or minus acres. Uh, and requests us to modify development requirements. Dante.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property was rezoned, um, in 2005 from RA to PD, planned development. Um, and that was, I'm sorry, 2006, and that was. I'm sorry, 2006, and that was March 21st, 2006, by the Henry County Board of Commissioners, and 13 conditions were placed on this development. The applicant is requesting to amend zoning condition number eight, and it's regarding the ADA requirements that were placed on the property. And so the applicant is requesting to amend condition number eight to remove the ADA requirements from the required pathway in the amenity package of the Colonnade at Hampton subdivision. Condition number eight currently reads, "The amenity package, which includes a six-foot-wide pathway and periodic benches, shall be installed prior to the 10th home being completed. The pathway shall be constructed to ADA standards." The applicant is requesting to install pathways with mulch and benches, and the applicant is also requesting to eliminate, the elimination of one section of the path which is located adjacent to lots 14 through 18 and 22 through 24 due to this pathway section having to be retrofitted to the existing lots by increasing the elevation approximately four to six feet. While the practice has been for staff to make no recommendation on modifications to zoning conditions placed by the Board of Commissioners, staff would like for the Board of Commissioners to be aware of the following. The mulch paths proposed by the applicant would require a high level of maintenance due to the natural degradation of the material and will be accessible to a smaller user base that would, that would any hard, that any hard surface would, in other words, accommodate. So a paved path would ensure greater longevity of the path and would provide access to a greater number of end users. The requested elimination to the path to be located adjacent to lots 14 through 18 and 22 through 24 would remove the convenience of access to the complete 15.29 acres of open space due to the existence of a retention pond by lots 6, 7, 11, and 12. Planning staff makes the following suggestion to be used for wording should the Board of Commissioners wish to approve the applicant's request, and for your viewing, I'll place it on the overhead as well. "The amenity package, which includes a six-foot-wide pathway and periodic benches, shall be paved." I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
District Two, you got any questions?
I know we're about to open this up for a public hearing. I've had a lot of communication with the applicant on this, and I think the applicant is amenable to something with the path. We've come to an agreement on that. However, it's come to our attention, from what I've been told, that the residents would prefer to have a playground system instead of this trail system. So I'm curious to know if that, if that is the desire of the applicants to kinda give us some guidance on what they are looking for, and if you, if you wanna come forward and kinda give some clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, members of the board. Yes, sir, I will. Yes, sir.
I'm Yul Monte Brown. I live at 1139 McConaughey Court. I am representing Century Communities of Atlanta LLC, longtime resident of McDonough. I thank Commissioner Preston for allowing me to speak, and I thank staff also for working with me. Before I talk about my position, let me explain a little history of this subdivision. As you all know, people that have been longtime residents of Henry County, we've had subdivisions that have been started, and subdivision owners, developers have gone belly up and left these properties vacant for someone else to pick up and pick up the slack. I used to sit on this side of the podium, so I know how it is when, when someone comes to you in regards to a zoning mod and some of the requests that people ask. I chose to represent Century Communities because I think that Century's, Century Communities of Atlanta, they are a very conscientious builder in this county, and they wanna do the right thing. So when we, when Century bought this, started buying the lots in 2012, we had all intentions of complying with the county ordinances and what was stated on the final plat. As a matter of fact, we bought, we bought 75, 85 lots, of the 85 lots, we bought 75 lots. As, as Mr. Gibbs said, these walking trails should have been installed before, after the 10th lot, after the 10th house was built. I'm not blaming anyone, we're not putting fault on anyone, but they were not built. And so we, in working with the planning staff and Mr. Preston, we did come up with an alternative. We decided that, being the conscientious builder that we are, we would like to do something, but to pave the some 1,700 linear feet of trails is cost prohibitive. So we did, I did speak to Mr. Gibbs about an alternative, and mind you, we've built every house, and we're waiting on three certificates of occupancy. So we wanna do the right thing. After meeting with Mr. Gibbs, I went out to the, I went out to the neighborhood to do a walk, and I bumped into some of the members of the Homeowners Association and some of the residents. And I said, "Well, I just wanted to get your opinion about these walking trails. I wanna make sure that if we use the substance of this recycled asphalt as opposed to virgin asphalt, would you oppose it?" Well, here's what I got. The residents expressed, first of all, they said, "Who told you that we wanted the trails?" I said, "Well, in speaking to staff, someone's been making phone calls to the county about these trails, and you guys want them." Several of them expressed, and there will be someone here that would oppose this today, but several of them expressed, "Not only do we not want these trails, we think they're intrusive. We were told, when we bought these lots, that nothing was gonna happen to this property behind us." So I said, "Okay, buyer beware." Yes, buyer beware, but we were told, and I'm not accusing, I'm not saying who, I don't know who, it was someone who predates me, and Mr. Ted Turner, who's here from Century Homes, that, that nothing was gonna be done to the property behind their houses, and therefore, some of these people cut back to the line of the trails. So if these trails, I can show you on, on the overhead, if these trails are put in these houses, in these, in this neighborhood, this is what's gonna, this is what it may look like. You mind if I... Is that upside down? That, that is the proximity of those trails, of some of those trails that abut these people's private property. So I said, "Okay, well, if you guys don't want trails, what would you like?" They said, "Obviously, someone doesn't know the demographics of our neighborhood. We have a lot of kids out here. We have kids playing everywhere in this neighborhood, and they have nowhere to go." These trails are coming in, invading our privacy. In lots 14 and 15, between lots 13 and 14, where we asked that the trails be removed, that cuts right down the middle of, of a resident's property line to get access to that trail. In leaving that subdivision, I did see kids in the street playing basketball, basketball hoops. People have done other different things to their backyard because they were told that that trail would not happen, it would be an undisturbed area. So I'm not here to say that Century never intended on building these trails. What I'm here to say is, the ball got dropped, but we are coming suggesting an alternative, an alternative in which we've garnered support for. Here's what I'm, what I, what me, along with the neighbors that I've spoken to, have said that if requirement number eight gets removed, if requirement number eight, number eight gets removed, Century will go in and repair some of the conditions and some of the concerns that they have. Not only would they do that, but this is what, this is what we are proposing. We're proposing that we build, as soon as I find it in my notes here, oh, I got it, I got it, that, we're proposing that a playground be built at the front on Lot 51. It's been measured, there's room for it, and in addition to putting that lot there, there will be privacy fences on each side, so between lots 50 and 51, and lots 51 and 52, there will be privacy fence not to intrude upon the other neighbors. I spoke to Commissioner Preston, and like I said, everybody's been, been, been very receptive in, in, in working with me. I have petition signed that I wanna enter to record. There are 20, 23 residents, some of which are here, if they would please stand, 23 residents that are opposed to having those trails in their backyards. And I wanted to defer some time for them to speak. I know, I know, I don't know what the intent was of the, of the original, you guys can sit, you can sit down. I don't know what the intent was of the original developers. But having had all these things that happened in this development, I think that the community would be better served because they express the fact that they don't have anywhere for their kids to play, and the trails, one, are intrusive, they won't be lit, so they, at certain times of the year, they can't be used at night. They have great sidewalks, and, and they have lighted subdivision. So I would ask, if, if the, if the commission sees fit that this is not enough proof that enough residents do not want these trails, and I know that there will be someone that will oppose this, if this, if this is not enough proof today, I would ask that this be tabled until we can gather enough signatures to show you that we do have the support. But I think right now, out of, out of 75 homes that we've built, the support right here is overwhelming. It's not one, two, three, four.
James, are some of the homeowners association members here, you know, some of the officers, so...
Yes, we have a president, a vice president of homeowners association, could you please stand?
Well, they, they don't have to, all I'd ask is if they're gonna make comments during the public section, if they could let us, let me know that that's what their position is, 'cause I might have a few questions to...
Yes.
Just know the intent, because I mean, if you were elected on the homeowners association, that shows some desire that you represent the residents, so that would help out tremendously.
And once again, I, the reason I represent Century is because I think Century is a conscientious builder. We have 10 subdivisions in Henry County, so we're not in here to build something and move and leave and leave something that's not sustainable in this town, in the city and in this county. So Commissioner Preston, I would ask if you don't see fit to pass what we're asking tonight, that it be tabled respectfully until we garner enough support.
Very good.
Thank you.
You got 29 seconds left.
I got 29 seconds. I'll defer that to the end.
Reserve, reserve your time, we'll call you back up.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna have the continuation of the public hearing. That was applicant's, almost 10 minutes, so now I'll open the floor for a public hearing. For anybody that'd like to be heard, you'll have 10 minutes as a total, as a group, and this will be in opposition of this request, so if you come to the podium and state your name, and you'll have 10 minutes, the group.
Hi, my name is Jessica Rush. I live at Colonnade of Hampton. We moved in there of April 30th of the last year, and when we was on the board, it does, did show the trail. It also, we was told we was gonna get a playground. I've been home every day, this gentleman has not, outside, I've never seen nobody has knocked on my front door. We've not even had an HOA meeting about changing the, the plan. Where they wanna put the playground is, is right behind the mailbox. It's already congested in that area. They just put two more new homes there. It's right up front, the mailbox is, you got two houses that are real close by. I don't have a problem with them putting a playground, but find another place to put it, add that playground. The walking trail, it should be paved. We may have somebody out there that's in a wheelchair or a handicap or other things. If our children are playing, they complain about our children riding the bicycles on the sidewalk, then put the walking trail, they can ride their bicycles on the sidewalks and everything. Like I said, I've been home, nobody has called, nobody has knocked on my door. There's 85 homes in that subdivision. You got 24 signatures, I think you need a more than 50, what, 55, 60 signature in order to change the plan? When you come to, I've, this is, I've been a HOA president before in my subdivision. You have to have more than what you, signature that you have there on that piece of paper in order to change anything. If somebody had a knock, or we had, we had had a meeting, my husband told me today, maybe I would've been more inclined to say, "Okay, let's do this here," but nobody knocked at my door. I don't work, I'm home, I'm a disabled vet, I'm home 24/7, so all somebody had to do was just knock at the door, and I would've been glad to say yea or nay.
Ma'am, just want to, so, just to be clear, so you do want the walking trails?
I do want the walking trail.
Okay.
Maybe they're opposed, but I would like to have the walking trail and have it paved.
Somebody else like to be heard in opposition?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
My name is Lavora Swain. I moved into the Colonnade of Hampton in 2015, August 1st. When I moved in, I was told that there was gonna be a walking trail. I was also told that there would be an area, like a picnic, I mean, a picnic area, playground area. That part I was very disappointed in, because to me, it would've increased my property value also. I moved to Henry County from, well, I moved from Clayton County to Henry County, starting a new life, a new world, and again, I invested my dollars into the property because it was a smaller subdivision, it was very quaint, it was just what I was looking for and what I was told that was going to be there. Well, once I got all in, happy, everything started changing. They didn't wanna do the walkway. They put two houses in the area where I was told that it would be like a picnic kinda area and a playground area for family and kids. The two houses that they put in the subdivision, I walked in one when it was completed, that's the smallest house that I have ever seen. They put two houses in a spot to me that only one house should've been in, and I, I understand costs, trying to get, get your money's worth, but again, to me, they did not uphold what they were saying, and putting houses that small, the houses look nice, but when you walk in them, no. I wouldn't put my family in it, it's just me and my daughter. The house is small, and to me, it would, it should've never been put there. I'm for the walk, walk area, and if they're not going to do the walk area, I wanna see what's the dollar equivalent, 'cause putting up a playground, I don't think that that's gonna be even equal to the dollars that they would've spent putting in a walkway. So again, I, I am all for the walkway, and very disappointed that they did not stick to the original plan that I was told before I spent my dollars, that we would also have like a family picnic area and a playground area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? You got five minutes and 16 seconds. Seeing nobody wanting to be heard, or opposition? Anybody wanna be heard in opposition?
When you say opposition, do you mean in opposition with the walking trails, or...
For, just whatever they wanna oppose. Well, I think we're having, I don't know if these people are walking up to speak in opposition. Y'all walking up?
Mr. Chair, I think there's a bit of confusion. You're asking about opposition. There are some people here that oppose the trails, and they are in favor of what we are putting forth, so I don't, I just wanna make sure that's clear.
I've been understanding they, they want a paved walking trail just like it was...
What's the cost of the trail, and what's the cost of the playground?
Well, I'll tell you this, specifically that the, the playground would cost significantly more than else those trails will. Okay, and...
Could you give us the number?
Also, also to speak, also to speak to, you know, there, there've been several builders out there, and I can't be held accountable for what someone else has told them.
Can you give me the cost, the actual cost of the trail versus the, versus the playground?
It, it depends on, it depends on, well, you know, we're...
It, it depends on, it depends on, well, you know, we're proposing the recycled concrete, I mean, recyc, recycled asphalt. It would be less than virgin asphalt. We've got that approval from the county.
Can you, can you give...
I don't know, I don't know that, that hard number right now, because what we did, and, and we can estimate it, the...
Commissioner Preston just showed, showed me a picture of a swing set.
Yeah.
Um, I'm assuming, is this the only thing that's going up in the playground?
It's mulch, it's a swing set with mulch around it.
So just this, right?
A play area, yes.
And you're telling me this costs more than...
Yes, sir.
The trail, around eighty-five homes?
And listen, it averages twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars to build one of those, 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 uh, play sets.
Okay.
Any more questions?
And that's, that's, you know, according to what you choose on a lorry in, we know that it's about twenty thousand dollars.
It would be, it would be less than twenty thou, twenty-five thousand dollars to build a trail through eighty-five homes?
No, sir, it will not be. It will not be. For asphalt trails, it will not be.
Anybody else got any questions?
Monte, is that the only thing y'all were planning on put, or you thinking about putting a pavilion there with some picnic area stuff, or...
There, there's no room. You know, this, these, uh, someone spoke of the fact that uh, these residents were told that they were gonna have two lots uh, for public area, for picnic area. Those aren't even conditions that are on the, on the, the final plat that was done in two thousand and eight. So those, those promises made, they were made by another builder, another developer, unbeknownst to us. All right, we have billed all but three homes in that subdivision. We're waiting on three COs. What we are asking is that the board shows some, some compassion for us as builders is that we are showing a good faith effort. Everybody is not going to agree with what we are proposing, but we're showing a good faith effort. We're holding up, this is holding up three subdivisions, and this is something that should have been done, as stated by your staff, should have been done after the tenth house was built. We don't know, Mr. Turner doesn't know of anyone that has said, and there's any condition that exists anywhere, that there were supposed to be two extra lots for them, nor there was, was there gonna be both a playground and trails. We contend all along. We want, if, if, if the residents wanted the trails, we were trying to make the best we could and the most affordable. After speaking with these restaurant, with these, uh, residents, we felt like we've come up with the best alternative. And that's what they want to see.
Why couldn't the developer do both, the trails and the playground?
The developer developed this subdivision in two thousand and eight. We started buying lots in two thousand and thirteen. So I'm, who's to blame that after ten houses and two different builders came in before us, after we've built seventy-five homes, we have three homes, three homes, that we're waiting for certificate or occupancies. Now, we're held to something that got, that got missed. We're, we've never contended that we don't want to build the trails, but after talking to, if we get a majority of the people to tell us that they want something else, and we go out and put trails, I think it's a lose-lose for the residents.
The public hearing has expired.
People walking to, to the, the front, was there? Yeah, was there another, I think there was, were there other people that wanted to speak?
We had nine minutes and sixteen, I announced twice. Do we have anybody that's in opposition for this? Okay, that, that concludes the public hearing.
What about, respectfully, Mr. Chair, what about the people in favor, because there's a mix-up?
You have ten minutes total for the applicant.
For the applicant?
Yes, sir.
What about the people in favor? That, I was told that it was ten minutes for, for the people who are in favor as well.
I think the ten minutes is, I always understood that ten minutes was applicant.
I think...
You wanna hear somebody? Put a motion on the floor.
Well, no, no, I, I, I think that the developer is trying to ca, cut costs by...
Excuse me, sir, excuse me. We're not, we're not developers.
No, 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 or whoever.
We're the builders.
I think you're trying to cut costs to build a swing set versus doing the trail. Um, what I would support is that you look at the total cost of doing the trail through that entire subdivision and take that money and invest it some way into their community. That's what I would support.
Respectfully, Commissioner Holmes, could I ask of people that are here that want the playground, please stand again?
Do the playground and the trail. Do them both.
That was playground and the path.
No, that is, these are people who want the playground.
Anyway.
Okay.
Give people a chance to speak.
Four?
I was, I wanted to give you a chance to speak, and then I was going, because I think there were additional people that wanted to speak.
I'd like to hear from the people, the other side, if, if you could.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's appropriate for you to, the application was made to modify the zoning condition to remove the ADA requirement, is, is my understanding. So the people who have come up and said they want a trail, they're actually speaking in favor of the application, because the application was to keep the trail.
Keep the trail.
People that want a playground are actually opposing the existing application, because the application...
That's what, that's what I'm thinking.
Proposes a, a tra, a playground. So I think that if these people here that wanted to come up, want to speak in favor of a playground, I think they're actually in opposition to the request, and I think it's appropriate for you to open the floor to them.
Thank you.
To open the floor?
I, I think so, because when you called for opposition, they were actually in favor. So what, what you've done right now is you've heard from the applicant, you've heard from people in favor of the original application, but you've yet to hear from people that oppose the original application. And I think you have to, I think you have to hear that. It's a little odd. I've never seen a, an applicant get up and oppose his own request, which is what is happening here.
Happened.
But I think you still have to...
An alternative.
I, I think you still have to allow the people that don't want the modification presented in the application.
That would be the same, as I'd have to restate, that people in opposition of the ADA, that's basically what I said. Is that not correct? So how would I rephrase and open?
I think like, I think those people, like everyone else, is, is a little confused about in favor and opposition. But I think if there are people here that want to speak in favor of a park or a playground instead of a walking trail, I think you should hear from them. I think, I think they have an interest in the outcome.
What I would ask, just because, I mean, this is important. I want the will of, of the residents. I mean, this is who lives with this thing, is the residents who are living in this neighborhood, is I'd like to first ask that we give maybe two to three minutes. I, I can ask, if anybody is out there in favor of the existing trail proposal, can you raise your hand if you didn't get to say something and you wanted to? But y'all, you, you, I know you got to address the board. Did anybody else want to address the board that did not get to address the board? Okay, I would like to then extend the opportunity for the people that are opposed and would like to, to talk about that. That, that's what I would request, because I think there was some confusion with the public. And, and can I see, are there people that would like to speak, just to know how many we're talking about, so I know how much time to... So we have two, okay, three?
We got nine minutes and sixteen.
Okay.
Nine minutes and sixteen seconds left on opposition. So I don't know how to state it, that if you're in opposition...
I think those three people should get the opportunity to speak during that nine minutes.
So I'm gonna have nine minutes and sixteen seconds for people in opposition.
Thank you. And, and two of these people, the president and the vice president of homeowners association, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna start the clock. I'm gonna start at ten, because I can't regulate the seconds. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Tara Lawrence. Um, originally, we did, I am one of the people that live, that will be living behind or in front of the walking trail. The walking trail literally will start on my, um, lawn. So that means people are gonna be walking on here. There's gonna be garbage there. There's gonna be people seeing into my dining room, into my kitchen, into my family room area. Now, when we moved here, we were not told that we were getting a walking trail. We were told that we can, you know, do whatever we wanted with our property. So, um, a few of us that are here that actually live where the walking trail will be cleared off their backyards a little bit. So now, when you put this walking trail, it's gonna be intrusive, because there's nothing, there's, there's no buffer for privacy. And everyone's, pretty much everyone's home in that subdivision, their family room and kitchen is in the back of the home. So now, when people are going through the walking trail, we can see you, you can see us. That's intrusive. It's invasion of privacy, and no one feels, wants to, you know, feel uncomfortable in their own home. Now, um, when the gentleman came to the neighborhood yesterday, he, you know, just randomly came to the neighborhoods, spoke to people that he saw outside, and we said, and, you know, some of us said, um, we would rather have a play area versus having a walking trail at this point. If this was done before the homes were built, we would be fine. Most of us would be fine. But because we've all been here two years, and now you want to put concrete in the middle of our driveway, I mean, in the middle of our lawn, that's, you know, come on, two years later, now you want to do this? You know, it's, it's very intrusive, and I have two small kids. I'm all for a play area. But if we didn't have a play area or a walking trail, I would rather none. I don't want a walking trail in my backyard. And a lot of us here feel that same way, so it's not even about the play area. It's just the fact that this is being done now, when we've all settled into our homes, and now we're gonna have people roaming around the backyards where there's no light, you know, and, and we, who wants to feel safe that way? You know, if I'm home by myself with my children, and there's kids back there, or people back there, that's not safe for me. I don't, I don't feel comfortable in that environment. And that's all I have to say about that.
I heard what the little girl asked you. She said, please get up there and tell them we want a playground.
That's exactly what she said. And I have two little girls.
Anybody else opposed or for it, whichever way you look at it?
Uh, my name is Jonathan Johnson. I'm, uh, I live at two oh one, Christopher Michael Lane, in the Colonnade of Hampton. I'm also, uh, uh, the treasurer for the homeowners association. And, um, I kind of represent a, a, a mixed community of people that have been basically lied to pretty much since the start of anyone buying their house. We were all told different stories. We were all told we were gonna get two lots with, uh, to the HOA kid plan, something for the children. We were told we were getting walking trails and, 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 um, pretty much everything. And then yesterday, um, Mr. Brown, uh, came up to me in my driveway and started asking questions about the walking trails. And I've, I've, uh, heard many stories from many different residents about how they don't want them. A lot of people do want them. We have a, a mixed batch, but I think most of the people really just want the builder to do something, something that, that, you know, we, we got nothing. We didn't get anything from any of the amenities that we were supposed to get. So we, I, I basically gave them some suggestions. I, I started talking to them. We started talking to other people in the neighborhood and said that, you know, a lot of people, we have a lot of kids here, that we're having problems with kids playing in the street, and we would love for a place for the kids to go. We also said that we, we have one sign on our entrance that says the Colonnade of Hampton, but the other side didn't get an entrance. I offered, you know, because I know that the, the walking trails are expensive. And I knew that instead of them going through people's yards and having to dig up all those trees and make that, that we should be able to get a playground and maybe even a sign, another sign. And then, as, as it's gone today, I think, I, I, myself, I neither oppose or for, I, I, I would love to have the walking trails and a playground. But, uh, it doesn't also, it doesn't cut through, the, the walking trails don't cut through my yard as it does some other people. But, um, really, I just think that, like, kind of like what you were saying, I, I just feel like if they don't want to spend that kind of money on a trail, that we should get that kind of money spent on something else. And, and I, I'm not sure that a playground is that kind of money. But a playground and, and a pavilion or a playground and a new sign for the, for the, you know, our, front of our, something that we get, at least shows us some owner, a homeownership, a little bit of pride in what we have. And that's all I have.
I kind of wanted to do one, one clarification. I think that we are, we're your government. We are kind of the backstop to try to help represent, we represent our residents. And I think that's why you heard Commissioner Holmes. And I think Monte, I've known Monte, and I think he, he represents the applicant well, and we've had great communications, but we're here to try to figure out the will of the people, because we're working, we've, the applicant has agreed they will do a recycled asphalt walking trail, if that is the desire, so... Because I heard in your voice, it sounded like you're saying, well, we're not, we hadn't gotten anything ever before, so we'll just take whatever you give us.
Well, I mean...
And, and that's what, I don't want, and you're, and you're an officer for this homeowners association, so that puts a greater burden on you guys.
Absolutely.
That, we're, I'm telling you, as your government, that's what we're here for. We're the accountability. This is where we, because the developers, I think it's good that they're investing in our community, but recognize, they got these lots probably at a distressed price...
Yes.
Because they did have some of these requirements built into the process. So we're there to try to help to ensure that you citizens are protected. But I need to know your intent of what you guys want, so we can ensure, just like Commissioner Holmes was talking about, that your intent and you're protected as residents. I mean, I think the applicant has strict, it strikes me as they try, truly are trying to invest in the community, because Monte's been very accommodating, very good with his conversations. I just need some guidance from you guys, and you sounded like you were just willing to take whatever, because nobody's been honest with you so far. And I just want you to know, we're here to help out.
I, I can tell you, before any of this, we had a, a, a hearing scheduled, I think it was in January, that got delayed. And we were, there were quite a few people here that are in, in opposition of the trails. So me, as a board member, I, personally, I have children. The walking trails don't really appeal to me, uh, because we have lighted streets and sidewalks. But as a whole, there are some people, my, my neighbor just spoke a little bit ago, and, and she's in favor of the walking trails. And I understand that, that because we were told this, you know, you buy a home because you were, you were told that you were gonna get a walking trail. Or, or, uh, like, we were supposed to get two lots that were gonna have some, some playground area for kids. There's a, a ton of kids in our, in our neighborhood. So everybody bought with the, with something that was sold that was a lie to them. You know, I mean, that was basically that, that it seemed like nothing was gonna, what, what they said were true. So to sit up here and as a, you know, as a board, I have to speak for everybody on a whole, and I talk to all the people. And there are some, there are a lot of people that are for the walking trails, a lot of people. There's probably a lot more for the playground. We had twenty-four, less than twenty-four hours, and we've got probably twenty-five signatures. We only have eighty-five homes. And, and if you heard, signatures in, in neighborhoods in Henry County aren't the easiest to come by. I've been trying to get the speed bump petition, uh, I've been trying to do that for over a month. And I, you know, I'm, I'm nowhere near fifty-one percent as yet, so it's, it's not easy. But in twenty-four hours to come up with that many signatures for the playground, it, it seems like, it would seem to me overwhelming that people want to...
And we can talk to that in a minute. I'm just trying to get a barometer of where we are. Is there anybody, I mean, so your thought is you don't want walking trails? But you would like to protect if, if there's enough money for the walking trails, you'd like to see something similar for the, the playground?
Yeah, spent in, 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 in that, oh, yeah. I'll, I'll let him speak too, he's...
Okay.
Yes, uh, my name is Xavier Raymond. Um, I live a couple doors down from Tara, the first lady that spoke. And this is just a picture of what's behind the resident. This shows where this water is, that, that's, uh, because they, they weren't, haven't completed a walking trail. And that's where they cleared the trees, just, just to show you the proximity that the walking trail will be behind the houses, see how close that is. And like I said, this is people's lines, and this is the walking trail. Like stepping over, uh, only inches, you'll be in the walking trail. And that's somebody's backyard. And I don't know if they're gonna put up any borders or whatever, but that's, you know... And then the reasoning why a lot of people picked those lots, because we were told that the tree lines would stay there or remain there, and nothing would be built behind the house. And that's why a lot of people selected those lots, and that's the reason I selected mine. And now they coming with these walking trails that's gonna be directly behind my house.
So, so are you an officer, or are you just, but you're, but you're...
Uh, just, just...
Okay, you just, but you are opposed to them, okay.
Yeah.
Was there anybody else? I think that was, okay.
How y'all doing?
Good.
Um, the house right there with the tree, that's my house. That water, where a lot of water at, the trees, my house is right there. And I oppose the walking trail, because like my neighbors say, it's right there at our back door. The trail is right there at my line. I got a line, and the trail will be right there, and like my neighbors say, you can see inside of a house. You know, it's just imposing. And again, I bought my house. I paid cash for my house, because I love Henry County. And I want it all. I, I googled Henry County and, and how well the area was. I work downtown. It takes me an hour to get to work and almost two hours to get home. When I come home, I want, um, that's my sacred. You know, I love my home, and I like the quietness. I don't mind kids, because I had kids myself. It doesn't matter what they build, why behind a person's house? If they talking about building behind a mailbox, or wherever, it's no house there. It's a house on the side of it. But it's no house that they building that you can see inside of their house. So I'm opposing the trail, not behind my house. I just, I just, I just want my privacy. That's the purpose of me, like the neighbor said, moving right there. Because I came and bought my house at the end of two thousand, August two thousand fourteen, and I wasn't told by anybody that it wouldn't be no trail or nothing. and fourteen and I wasn't told by anybody that it wouldn't be no trail or nothing. I was told that the tree was gonna be there and that if we wanted to knock down trees, and I think some of my neighbors spent a lot of money knocking down trees so they can see their property. But I'm just opposed of that, that trail. I mean, that's, that's my house right there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with a comment? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, good afternoon, my name is Gala Richards and I'm living next door to Ms. Powell. I'm the one with the basketball goal, I'm a single parent, I would love to see my son playing in the backyard with my, the basketball goal that I have installed there and if he can go to a playground as well, would be great in the neighborhood.
So are you-
But I do oppose other than trail.
You're opposed to the trails?
I'm behind, I'm next door to, to the just spoke, so I don't want a walking trail behind my house, but I would love for my son to be back there and I can just watch him play the ball back there in my yard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
Hi, I'm actually lot fifty-two, the one that has the mailbox right next to it. I'm the person that they did not notify that they were going to put a mailbox there, I'm the person that they didn't tell that they were gonna be clustered boxes, so they put a mailbox in front of my house and did not have mail set there. I'm also the person that did not get a notification that we were also going to get, um, the walking trails placed anywhere. I was also told at the beginning when we purchased our home, that there would not be any homes in these other lots and then they ended up dropping something there. I'm opposing both the walking trail as well as the playground because it will be right behind my house again, or right next to it actually. The walking trail is behind my house, the mailbox is next to my house and the playground will be right behind that as well. I also would love my privacy as well as my quietness. I drive about an hour and a half to go into Atlanta for work and two hours to come home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, I know we're out of time, I, I would, I would respectfully ask, just give me one closing statement.
Okay.
Well, as you can see, we, we've, we've done our due diligence, we've worked with staff. I do take issue with the, with the, I do take issue with the, um, the statement that was made by councilman, by, uh, Commissioner Holmes, that this has something, a lot to do with cost savings. You know, having been on that side of the bench and having, doing what I'm doing now, I am looking out for the benefit of the residents as well as my client. So in closing, I'd like to ask Commissioner Preston, if you don't see fit to support this playground at this point, I would ask, would this be tabled? Uh, we will garner the signatures that are required, whether, no matter, you know, whether the, the expenses won't be involved in this, we will, we will garner the signatures that would be, that you would require in supporting this. As you heard, the majority of the people that are here tonight don't want trails in their backyard and they were told otherwise.
So, so here's, here's where I am with this, is that, um, I heard from several residents that they felt like that they only had twenty-four hours notice, that, that this was kind of, and, and I know we've had signs out, you know, advertising the public notice and so forth, but it sounds like, and it's, and I'm happy to hear we have officers for the homeowners association here in, in, in the meeting. What I would ask is, is that I would like some type of, uh, you know, petition of what, you know, to, to work with what, I know, but we, there's eighty-five homes in this neighborhood and I, I heard a pretty good split on things and, and I heard that there wasn't a lot of time given, so I would like to make sure that we give everyone a voice on this. And then, hang on one second, Monte, the only other question I would have, I would like to see what the cost is of the walking trail system and I'd like to know what the cost is for the playground system. Because I do think that's important. There is something, you've been great, you've been an advocate on trying to talk about solutions, but as the, I mean, I represent the citizens that live in that community and I want to make sure, cause the property was probably bought at a distressed price, I want to ensure that these citizens are getting the best of what they should be getting since we will be giving up something to get something else. So I think that we should know some cost substance of, of what is actually going in for the residents.
I was speaking to my, my client and I don't think that's a problem, but I want to read to you what this petition, petition says. "We, the residents of the Colony of Hampton, do not agree with having walking trails placed in our subdivision as it is intrusive and unsafe." I think that's pretty plain and-
And, and I would, I would encourage the homeowners association officers to really take an active role in this because you guys have the fiduciary obligation to represent your homeowners association. So please help us help you to know what the intent is. Measure twice, cut once, that's why I'm gonna make a motion to table this. Um, we don't have to table it for a long time, I just want to make sure that we get this right for the residents.
You put that in the motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we table this to get a petition.
Second District, uh, three, any further discussion, in favor of the motion, raise